All right, we're going to call the special meeting. I don't guess they're special anymore since we do this once a month. But we're here at the Murfreesboro Police Headquarters. It's October 14th. If you will, just bow with me. Father, I thank you for this day, this chance that we get together, for the many blessings that we have in our community, for the things that are happening in Rutherford County. Lord, we pray for the people in Louisiana. We are so thankful for the emergency service responders who put their lives on the line to be able to go down and help fellow residents that are dealing with these things. Lord, give us the ability to make decisions that are in your honor, to be thoughtful, to be compassionate, and most of all, to do these things in your honor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And in conjunction with the governor's executive order, we are continuing to do digital meetings. So Ms. Skels Harris, we can, or Vice Mayor Skels Harris, we can see you. I don't know if you can.
Okay, I can hear you.
Oh. Oh, and she's got.
What?
The screen just went out when you were saying that.
Yeah, that's, I think Chad did that.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, just to correct one thing on the agenda. It does say special meeting on the agenda. This is a regular meeting.
Okay, that's what I.
And the distinction is it'll allow us to do other business if we need to.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we are going to start with our agenda. We have several different items, but we have our airport terminal MTSU signage. Chad, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you know, back in September 19th, 2019, the city council approved a transient use agreement with MTSU and their aerospace department. And they are leasing really the south, most of the south wing of the terminal for a classroom, a waiting area, and an office. And as the terminal developed, we also invited them to come in and give us some ideas of what they would like to do as far as signage for promoting not only the aerospace department, but to the, but the rest of everything that goes on at the university. Well, in that transient use agreement, not only do they lease space, but we also offered them an area in the lobby so that they could advertise the university to all the people that come and go through the lobby area, which could be a number of industry or people that could have a, an effect partnership or something like that in the future with the university. So they have provided this. Staff has reviewed it, and it has gone before the Airport Commission for approval. And this would be an addendum to that transient use agreement, being an interior signage addendum. And the first slide or picture was of the classroom area and some of the branding that you recognize, the true blue in middle Tennessee State. In the waiting area, they use some of that same logos. And then in the classroom, the doors are frosted to kind of make sure the students stay focused on their lesson. And also some signage out there in the hallway for those that pass by. And to help the students find their classroom, we put some signs outside, too. And inside the lobby, that TV area, that's a TV that we have purchased that is going to be dedicated to them to be able to change up messages. They have some pictures, the true blue logo, and just some of those signage there that you have. And we did look at this not only from the university standpoint, but also as in the future, when we have other companies that may want to come in here, how would we do their signage and logos and things like that in that facility as well? If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I have a related question, just quickly. We got an email, I suppose everybody else got this email. Has the size of MTSU's training group doubled?
Almost, yes. I would say it's significantly large over the last couple of years. And the answer to that, real quickly, is that there is, prior to COVID, a huge pilot shortage nationally and internationally. So the airlines, if you recall, like Delta, had a program at MTSU, a partnership called the Propel Program, that was designed to get students from training into their ranks to, for them to further train them and get them flying. When COVID hit, of course, there's a gluttony of pilots. But once, you know, the thought is, once the economy comes back around and the airline numbers start to go back up, there will once again be a shortage. So yes, the students, the enrollment for MTSU and the aerospace department is over 1,000 students. Back in 94, when I was there, we were lucky to have 300 or 400. So right now, there's over 360 students that are flying. And they have around 35 aircraft, so to, for them. And they're trying to get different certifications and stuff like that, depending on what year they are. So they're flying a lot, from 6:00 AM in the morning to late in the evening to try to get all that completed.
And are they catching up some from when they couldn't fly?
Yes, this summer, yeah. Yes, that's part of it, too. This summer, they only offered certain classes because they were trying to minimize exposure rates. And as we learned how to handle all this, they only allowed certain smaller classes to come in. So we really had a stoppage, you know, probably in March and April. A little bit of opening, and fall came, and it went wide open.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
I think I had responded. I checked with Chad. We can't control the airspace, correct?
No.
You know, so there's.
No.
There's a lot of people who will fly from Smyrna and, you know, different stops. Or, you know, so we just don't have the ability to control if you're who you're flying over.
And Mayor, we are trying to talk with the university and come up with some ideas to try to help minimize that or control a little bit, as much as we can. It's really going to have to be a voluntary program, though, with the university. So we're exploring those options.
All right. Can we, anyone have any other questions? Otherwise, we'll need a motion for this.
Don't move.
That's right, Mr. Wright, now we can see you. So we're glad you're on board, too. All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we're going to pull off item two. We'll move to fiscal year '21, and this is our budget amendment. Ms. Tucker.
Thank you. Get this pulled up. Okay, so as promised, we're taking a look at our budget to actual performance so far for the year. When we proposed, let's make sure we get this going, okay. When we proposed the budget back in May, we were unsure of what to expect as a result of the pandemic. So taking into account state, MTS, and other advisors, we decided a conservative approach was the best approach. The budget reflected a 6% cut in total revenues, most of which was in sales tax collections. And then we dropped sales tax projections by 55% through September and forecast relatively flat collections for the remainder of the year. Expenditures were also reduced this year by 4% over last year's budget. And this included continuing the hiring freeze and the nonessential spending freeze, as well as capital spending. So we balanced the budget by budgeting 4.7 million of unassigned fund balance this year. So that's just a recap of where we start. We'll take a look first at revenues and what we've experienced so far this year, and then move into expenditures. On the revenue side, we're looking at around 15.7 million increase to revenues on our amendment. So here's a look at our local sales tax. Since the pandemic hit, you can see on the chart on the left where we adjusted our budget projections compared to where we had been before. So we started this, May collections are for the March sales. And while we did see a slight dip in May and June, the drop wasn't nearly as big as we originally projected. We've since regained that ground that we have lost and are now showing growth over last year. So so far, nearly 8% increase has been realized through September. And the proposed amendment, you can see on this chart on the right, reflects increasing our budget from around 42 million to 49 and a half, which that mirrors what we realized for fiscal year '20, keeping it flat. And so since we don't know yet how the rest of the year will shape up with regards to COVID and the economic response, I felt like this would be a conservative, a conservative approach to allow us to absorb future losses if we have any other dips in the year. So moving on to state sales tax, we're also showing growth over last year. Again, we budgeted a 55% decrease, but we've realized close to a 5% increase through September. And so this proposed amendment reflects going from 9 and a half million up to 11.2 this year. Again, that's flat with last year's collections. A business, an increase to the business license tax is also proposed. And these funds are more difficult to estimate since most of our collections come in May through July. So we're showing still a small decrease as compared to last year, but still an increase over what we originally budgeted. Other miscellaneous revenue increases are included for cable franchise, street highway maintenance, stormwater and rover grants. And then also, in looking at our revenues, we did consider where decreases in our budget needed to be reflected. Most of those are COVID-related, and the largest of which is in Parks and Recreation. When we did the budget back in May, we really weren't anticipating the program closures that we saw at Parks and Rec. So this reflects that hit, which was around 460,000. I'll say, too, recreation has also cut around 230,000 in expenses to help mitigate those drops in revenue. One-time funding is reflected here in the amended revenues as well. And this includes 2.1 million in Federal Cares Act funding as a response to the COVID pandemic. In addition, 2.6 million of the state grant that I presented back in August is included. So we've, you know, we received a $3 million grant, but we've already budgeted to use about half a million of that. And then also, we have land sale revenue of 1.2 million for property that was sold on Medical Center. So in all, our total nonrecurring revenues come to about 6 million, and our recurring revenues come to around 10. Are there any questions on the revenues before I move into expenses? Okay. So on expenditures, the amendment covers close to $11 million in additional spending. And over half of this is for one-time, nonrecurring capital-type expenses. In addition, pay increases have been budgeted as well as IT software and hardware needs, public safety positions and equipment. And then we're beginning to thaw our hiring freeze as well. So you'll see on this chart that I've included the airport-south apron development. You have a memo that I emailed this morning. It's also laid out on your desk explaining this. This is just really allowing for us to have more efficient bond and grant management. And it's no change at all to the total use of or add to fund balance for general fund, or it also does not require any additional borrowing for the '21 CIP. So we'll start first with our one-time funded expenditures. These total close to 6 million. And the airport-south apron development tops the list. We also have a million and a half for the Segal Building, Segal, I'm sorry, the Segal Soccer Park Building. Police equipment, including new technology, equipment for officers, and other equipment total 964,000. There's 700,000 for a fire apparatus replacement, which was approved in the FY '20 CIP back in February. 250,000 in various IT equipment needs, hardware and things like that, servers. And then we have funds available also for community services for recreation and golf facilities and equipment there. And then, let's see. Additional grant-funded positions for rover and community development are included in this other category as well as additional software and equipment for other city facilities. Are there any questions on the one-time expenses before I move into priority one? Okay. So priority one expenditures total close to 3 million. The majority of this is focused on public safety with around $1,007,000 budgeted for new positions. And that includes 16 police officers, three lieutenants, and a fire rescue data analyst. Also, with the hiring freeze lifted, we originally had budgeted an allowance for vacancies of about 1.3 million, and we're programming about half of that back in. Additional police equipment and software is budgeted here as well as other software for IT backup, land management, and public works. And then we also have some additional positions, including promotions and new and full, uh, full and part-time positions budgeted. Priority two expenditures come to just a little under 2 million, most of which are the raises. These are budgeted to go into effect in November, and they include a 1 and a half percent across-the-board COLA, a 2 and a half percent STEP, and then a 1 and a half percent raise for the open-range employees. Other additional positions and position adjustments are included for solid waste, street, HR, and golf, along with training and outside legal services. A few items were budgeted under priority three, and these include a downtown parking study, a consultant to assist with the sign ordinance revision, improvements to the Patterson Pool area, and some golf part-time positions. I know that's a lot of things getting added to the budget. We did also defer around 2.1 million in requests to next year or future years. About 800,000 of this is in new positions and another 700,000 almost for the medical premium increase that's getting passed on this year. In addition, we also had various departments request new vehicles that were deferred this year as well. So when you look at our budget amendment, the budget amendment includes around 15.7 million in new revenues and close to $11 million in additional expenses. So like I said before, where we originally budgeted to use 4.7 million of unassigned fund balance, we are now no longer budgeting to use fund balance. So as far as recommendations and strategy, we recommend council approve the budget amendment ordinance and resolutions that are presented today. And then once the ordinance has been passed on second reading, then those amendments will go into effect. As we move through the rest of the year, we'll continue to monitor our revenues and expenses. And should we experience any significant negative revenue changes, we will certainly take into account how our spending is affected and, you know, consider other freezes throughout the year if necessary. FY '21 CIP will be reviewed next. And then the '22 CIP is anticipated to be presented next month. So I know it's a lot of information thrown at you in a short amount of time here, but I do think this is a conservative amendment that will still allow us to provide a good level of service to our residents. Are there any questions?
Erin.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Regarding the raises, we say we're going to do a 1% COLA.
1 and a half percent.
Okay, and so there's a difference in the STEP employees and the RANGE employees. Why are we, difference in the STEPS and RANGE? Because it's putting, uh, it's putting the whole budget, to me, as far as paying the employees out of proportion. I personally don't feel, and this is nothing that you, I'm just, probably Craig can answer. I personally don't feel that we should be making a difference like that because we're treating the employees different. And it's already tensioned. I would like to see a straight-across-the-board percentage of, or either adjustment here because it sometimes puts people coming in or people already here making more money than people that have been here for years under this type of range.
The structure of the pay plan was adopted by council, I think, a couple of years ago.
2019, yeah.
2019. And the, for the general fund employees, it was recognized that we were experiencing quite a bit of difficulty holding on to employees past that five-year period. Employees were coming and going in the type of employment market that we had at that time. And that it appears it will eventually go back to here within a few months. And so in order to hold on to those employees and avoid the cost of recruiting and retraining, excuse me, retraining, we put in the pay plan, which gives a degree of certainty for employees years one through five. After year five, we saw a noticeable decrease in employees leaving the organization. So that was the structure of the pay plan. It's worked successfully. There may be individual instances that we would need to look at from a market standpoint. And we can certainly do that. The pay plan is built around a market analysis. I think next year, we're slated to do some market analysis on different positions to make sure that we are meeting the market. But overall, it's worked. It's worked pretty successfully. And if there's one or two instances out there where an employee feels like there's a situation that should be addressed, and we can certainly do that, they just need to raise the issue with their supervision.
Yeah, Madeline, this is Rick. And just, I think, as a reminder, one of the things that I remember from that 2019 conversation is that we were trying to put a little bit of focus, we were wanting the capability to put a focus on the lower-paid employees and be able to bring them up a little bit where, you know, if we weren't able to afford doing it for the entire workforce, I believe is kind of part of where that came from, too. So with this setup that we got right now, we're actually giving a larger percentage increase to the, what would typically be the lower-paid group of employees, the ones that aren't in the open range. Is that correct? Because those are the exempt employees, or whatever we call those.
Yeah, the non-exempt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Yeah, I thought I remembered that. Yeah, because I think that.
Okay, I just, I was just in a different train of thought with the pandemic going on and people so low on money. Don't really agree with that, but I accept that, sir. And Mr. LaLance. Another thing, how much are we building in for firefighters? Because my understanding is that we've lost approximately 20 firefighters this year. We are training them, we are hiring them, they are getting schooling, they are getting the experience, and they are moving on. I think even another one is leaving today. That's a great percentage of firefighters just leaving us, going to other cities. And I understand that a lot of them are going to Nashville where the amount is in the thousands more than what we are offering. Plus, they have a pension plan down there. To keep this from happening because, like my dad said, it sounds like we are fattening frogs for snakes here. Do we have anything in place when we hire a firefighter that, like the military, when they go through medical, they have to stay where they used to? Have to stay and practice medicine for anywhere from three to five years before they can move on? Do we have anything like that once we train these firefighters? Because that's a lot of firefighters that we are training for someone else to get the benefit and the experience from.
Well, in answer to your last question, it's no, we don't. I wouldn't recommend going that route because it'd be another impediment to recruiting, I think. But on the larger question, I think, and I don't know if the chief's here, he may be addressed more. We have lost to other agencies, some firefighters. Retirement is one thing that is occurring across the organization, including in the firefighting ranks as well. And so if you need more detail, then Chief Fokes is here. He can talk about specifics. But occasionally, we will lose firefighters to other agencies, and there's various reasons for that. Some of it's pay, but it's not always pay. I think some of it is an ability to do different things that traditionally we haven't done here as far as what their practice is and what they can do. That's one of the factors that's been cited in the past. Chief, have you got anything to add?
I think we need to look into our criteria because I disagree with not holding them to the fire once we hired them and trained them. At least, they need to stay with us at least two years. Because look at the thousands of dollars going out. Isn't it approximately 25,000 to train a firefighter?
Well, yeah, I don't.
Money going out the window. We just training them for someone else to take the benefit. I just think that's something we need to really look hard at and change. If we, I just personally feel we need to put some kind of stipulation. Because, I mean, that's money just opening up the window and throwing it out.
Well, Chief, run down some of the reasons that we've had some, and then we can talk about some of the ideas, maybe to.
Yeah, we haven't lost 20 to other agencies. We've lost, we've lost five to Nashville this year. And the pay difference between us and Nashville is pretty significant. It's about $8,000 a year. They do have a pension, and that's one of the reasons that our employees have mentioned in their exit interviews that they are leaving is for a defined benefit pension system as well. And that was an attraction to Nashville. As far as looking at it, I think we've discussed with legal, and we have talked about doing a contract with employees that are hired to recoup the training costs, to recoup some of the other costs that are going into that. That's something that we would have to work with, human resources and legal about, and see what other cities do. There, a lot of cities don't do it because of recruiting. And then other cities do it to kind of hold the feet to the fire. As far as you get them in there, you train them and make it to where they can't really go anywhere else. And so for us, we anticipate that would be a two-step process. The initial training costs, which are, was all their firefighting training, their gear and other things like that, and then the initial cost of onboarding. And then once they go through EMT and advanced EMT classes and attain licensure, then we would basically renew that contract for that training cost and try to recover that training cost if they leave. That's truthfully, and I think Mr. Tucker may want to do that, but when our discussions with that, you're only able to recover a portion of that cost because their time is the biggest cost factor. And our time allotted to them is the biggest factor in training. It's not as much the cost of the class. We are actually looking at doing a lot more classes in-house. Even our recruit training academy, we're moving to in-house this coming year to save costs of sending them to Bell Buckle and doing those things. And we can do that cost or do those classes in-house. So we're trying to save costs on all those. But the biggest factor on cost is the training cost of not having them on our fire trucks responding every day. It's the cost of having them out doing training at those times. And that's the one thing that's very difficult to recover under a contractual situation. You can basically charge, from what I understand, for the classes and the cost of the classes, but it's more difficult to charge based on their time.
You just have to be careful with that because it is a recruiting issue. There's also a morale issue of having employees that are contractually obligated and not wanting to be around. So there's a balance to be achieved in there. And I think, like you said, that I recall now, you're looking at some of that. But we have to proceed somewhat cautiously with.
Yeah, I mean, this has got implications across the entire organizations, the organization here, which is, I bet you every director, every director of every department here would say there's an issue with we train somebody and there's a chance they might leave. You know, that's where it is with every single job you take in this entire world. So, I mean, honestly, Madeline, I think where you're started off on this, I completely get it. It makes sense to say, hey, we don't want to train somebody, It makes sense to say, hey, we don't want to train somebody, and then turn around and let them leave. At the same token, if I was somebody looking to be a firefighter, and I go to Murfreesboro and I say, will you guys hire me? And we say, yes, but at the end of two years, if your family changes, if something changes and you decide to leave here, you're going to owe us half the money back. You know, I mean, I'm not going to take that job because I got, you know, I got bills to pay with that money I'm earning. So, is that what you're talking about when you say the recruiting process?
Right. That's exactly what I'm talking about. It's an impediment to recruiting.
So, I think there's probably a, you know, probably an answer to this, probably a solution to it. I don't know if the contract scenario is really the right way, just for my...
Well, one of the reasons to go to a market, kind of a market-based pay compensation plan, is to address some of that. So, we're staying competitive in the market and able to fill our jobs, based on what pay. Now, there's other things. There's benefits, and there's a retirement plan, and it's, you know, it's hard to compete with a defined benefit plan. But I think we're competitive, I think we stay competitive. But you'll hit those periods of time in any particular job classifications where you'll have people shift around. Because you may have another agency that just jumps up their pay because they want to recruit a bunch of people, and you'll lose people in that, and they'll balance back out over time. And so, we have to be somewhat cognizant of that. And, you know, we're watching the average age of our workforce, which is getting up there. And so, we'll have a period of time where there'll be departments that will lose quite a few people just because they're retiring, and will need to bring in new people. And we want to be able to hold on to those people after we train them because that is a big cost. Recruiting and training is a big cost. And so, we're cognizant of that as we go through all the entire process.
I'm going to segue, but it's, we can stay on this a little bit, but I want to throw this out here just because this will all matter together, and I think you'll see why I mean this. But, you know, so one question I've got on this, and it'll apply to what I'm going to ask also. Did we, in the last pay plan that we did, did we put something into effect that would sort of accelerate the first five years somehow to get people up to a certain speed? Like, maybe it was more than five years, but there was some period of time that we...
There was a five-year, it was, the pay, the step plan for five-year employees, non-exempt employees, is, has a built-in 1.5 COLA, 2.5%. And that's kind of, and I don't want to say solid because it can be altered by council, particularly on the COLA side, but we wanted to give some degree of certainty on a step plan. So, and that typically is more than what we would do on the open-range side. So, there was accelerated in the first five years.
The purpose was to accelerate those first few years to get them up to a particular part, you know, kind of quicker to try to reduce the impact of what she's talking about, right? I mean, maybe after the first year, you still may have somebody leave for whatever reasons or whatever, but if they stick that five-year thing out... So, here's my little segue here, and just so I can throw this out here. And Chief, this, it's obviously, you'll see why I'm bringing it up. But I, you know, there's kind of one issue here of saying, well, with the fire department, where we are right this minute, is we do have a few people leaving. We've had pension mentioned and that sort of thing. There was something that I was going to bring up, that I want to go ahead and throw it out here now so we can all sort of absorb it collectively and as a whole about the police department. And that particular situation is very different to me in the sense that we literally can't fill the positions with the type of applicants that we have been wanting to get. I mean, we just, parentally, over the last five years or so that I can remember, it's, you know, we're 17 short, we're 19 short, we're 16 short, we're 27 short, we're, you know, I mean, it just seems like we are always fighting that battle. And every time I've asked over those number of years, you know, there are multiple reasons. And can we directly say every time that money's always the answer? No, but can we all agree that when we go to take a job, we look at, there's a bunch of these factors over here about, you know, what's my uniform feel like when I put it on, and, you know, how long do I have to be gone during the day, and how many weekends do I have to work? Yeah, there's all those issues, but if the money's right, all those issues can feel a little bit better. And so, you know, from a standpoint of where we are with being able to get the people actually hired versus hiring people and having a few leave, you know, if we hire however many people or a number, last number of five years, and we have five leave this year, that's a totally different thing than literally not being able to get. I think I asked the question last year, I've asked it again this year, what's the number look like? And, you know, we're feeling like it's a big achievement to get half of our open positions actually hired every year in the police department. And so, my suggestion was going to be to throw out to you guys that we try to move that range. I think, you know, and I did call the chief and just literally this week over this and tried to call around just to get some numbers and make sure I had this right in my head about what the cost would be. But it seemed to be that about a 1.5% move would get us to a spot. And here's the overarching thing for me is, number one, just as an organization, we've got to be able to have employees where we need them. Number two, as it relates to police officers, you know, I want the best police officers that we can get. And I think it is completely, I think we, I hope we all agree that we want to do what we think is the right thing to do, to get the best officers so that we minimize our chances of bad things happening. And so, to me, if we, I think it's just completely backwards, you know, to say, well, we're going to be at the middle of the range of the market and expect that we're going to get the cream of the crop every time. We have, you know, an awful good bunch of guys and gals doing what they do, and I'm proud as heck of them. But, you know, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, I think if, you know, the global environment for police is, you know, I'm afraid that if we wait a year or two before we try to get ahead of this thing, that we may be, instead of being 19 behind, we may be 25 behind, and then we've got some serious safety stuff to be thinking about. So, I was going to throw that out there. So, the only reason I'm bringing it up right now, I don't want to, I'm not trying to circumvent the fire department discussion, Madeline. I just want to make sure, because as we talk about them, both of those things have impacts to the budget, and wanted to make sure, sort of get that out there in the midst of the bigger picture discussion, okay? Does that make...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. Just last night, on the World News, NBC News, they're predicting within 10 years, maybe less, that this Robot 53 is going to take over fire departments. They showed examples of it, and I think they're already using it somewhere, I forgot what state, but how it's taking over the manual use of physical bodies there. And it has more water, what, whatever. But, you know, all of this may be obsolete, what I'm talking about, anyway. But I'm good. I'm just questioning some things.
Back in 19, we were having a significant issue. If y'all remember, I think we lost like 24 police officers. We lost 14 in a couple of months to different agencies. And we really, you know, reinstituted that step plan for our public safety providers, and we all said really what you're saying exactly right now. We want our, you know, at that time, I think our entry-level police officer and firefighter were making 38 maybe, or 37, and we bumped that up to 40,000. And once they go through training, I think it goes up to 41 and some change, or I forget, you know, what the exact number is. But, I mean, Rick, I'm on board with you. I think now is a time that, you know, we make sure that we take care of those people in the community. And, you know, I will say, we're not ever going to be able to compete with Nashville on certain things in pay. And there's going to be people who may drive 30 minutes, and, you know, I don't think we're going to stop that. I would argue with you that there's a lot of things that we don't want to compete in Nashville in. You know, that, look at the debt ratio and the structure that this council's worked really hard to maintain here in Murfreesboro, and I would tell you, that's a good thing. So, I think we need to be focused on, and this is where it goes, on that market study that municipalities that we would lose people to, you know, Mount Juliet, Smyrna, Laverne, Rutherford County, you know, Wilson County, that people, I don't know if we ever could compete salary-wise with Brentwood and some of those departments, but, I mean, Rick, I would agree. I think our starting fire, or first responder salary, police salary, and more importantly, I think dispatchers, you know, we've had a lot of discussions on dispatcher salaries. So, I think those are all, I think it would be important, but I'm dead on board with you.
Well, the numbers that, I mean, a couple of things I point out that I think were telling to me, and, you know, first of all, I think from a number standpoint, Aaron, I had asked about the, you know, from a discussion with Mike, and they had discussions that about a 1.5% number would get them to a place where they are more competitive with the neighboring agencies that they typically are competing with. And one of the things that I heard, not from Mike, but from some other people I was talking to, was that, you know, we, many people are applying for those jobs in multiple areas. And it's kind of, you know, we're pretty close, but just not quite there on some things. But the money part is where if we get up, you know, 1.5%, and the number was like the $300,000 kind of impact. And again, this is only on the lower group, not on the open-range folks, you know, this is on that lower, the officers and the, I'd say lower, you know, the non-exempt. Yeah, sorry, the staff, the staff folks, sorry. So, there's only about a $300,000 number.
For the eight months, if it goes into effect in November, it's 230,000 for police, and then for a full year, it'd be around 340,000. Now, what he's saying is, an additional 1.5% on top of the one that was already proposed for a COLA. So, it'd be a 3% COLA. This is just on the police side that we're talking about right now, but 3% COLA plus their 2.5% steps.
Would it be very similar, going to Madeline's point, would it be very similar if we did that for fire as well?
For fire, for eight months, it'd be, it'd be less, it'd be about 155,000 for eight months, 230 for a year or so. In total, if, for this year, if we made it effective in November, like we are suggesting with the other raises, it'd be a little under 400,000 for the rest of this year, and then around, just a little under 600,000 on an annual basis moving forward.
We went from budgeting, to use, you know, to the layman that's out there, we went from budgeting 4.7 million in fund balance, which we've tried really hard over the last three or four years to not get into fund balance, but we didn't know what was going to happen. So, you know, we all agreed during budget to spend that. We're 7 million plus ahead from where we budgeted, and, you know, we're figuring, which I think is the smart thing to do that the council agreed on as well, is that, you know, we're figuring for our next nine months or eight months, that we're figuring zero growth in sales tax. I mean, not, we're at 5.4 right now, or 5.5, or whatever that...
Yeah, on local, we're almost 8% up so far for the year through September over last year, and then on state, almost 5%. So, yeah, I mean, the revenue numbers, I'll say, were very conservative, you know, going forward.
We're still keeping those conservatives moving forward. I mean, we're budgeting no growth.
Right, exactly. So...
By the way, is it true that we get all of our internet sales tax numbers? Is that considered state? Is that how that...
Yeah.
Amazing. I would have thought that would be 8%, and the other would be 5%.
Right. I think people just shifted where they were spending their dollars.
It's hard to equate because it goes through a formula, so it's not...
Yeah.
So, I don't disagree with the conversation we're having. I mean, I think that makes some sense. I think all of our employees should be paid, you know, appropriately and treated well and all those sorts of things. The other thing, talking about 1.5%, if I use $44,000, so that's $600 a year, which is 12 bucks a week, are we really saying $12 a week makes the difference? And I ask it that way because, you know, I think if I was going to be, and this is just how I process, if I was going to be in law enforcement, I would say, where would I want to serve? What community would I want to serve? What are the other things outside of pay? Because most of the time, when people talk about enjoying their job, pay is usually what they say, but there's usually something else surrounding that. It's been my experience. And so, not to not address the pay question, I'm okay doing that. I would probably be okay doing more than that. And so, that's just kind of my perspective on it. But I think it's fair, if we're having that conversation, you'd have a hard time convincing me that $600 is a reason we're losing police officers.
As a part of the total, it's a much bigger number when we're talking about this year.
Yep. I'm just talking about per person, the impact on an individual decision as somebody's doing that. So, I say that not as a criticism at all, to say, what else can we do from a recruitment standpoint? Are we recruiting? How are we recruiting? Are we waiting for applications to come in? Or are we actively trying to find people that we want? Are we selling the quality of Murfreesboro? Are we selling the facilities that we have? Are we selling all the other things that we do well? I just mention that for the good of the discussion.
Yeah, I like it. I mean, anything, look, I'm up for whatever, too. You know, the numbers that I'm using are kind of based on, when I was saying, look at the total number, the total of the COLA plus the step plus this is a much more bigger number than 600.
Hey, I would, absolutely. I'm just saying, I think people should be saying, you're not going to take people, you're not going to take people from Murfreesboro. What can we do to create that?
You know, I think Chief Mullin probably could tell us a little more, but, you know, some of the things I recall that we've, you know, that we voted on, we voted on, you know, freezing some of the, over the last couple of years, the medical insurance premiums. We've, the big one back in 2010 is, I think, yes, 2010 is when we did change our pension program. But since then, we've gone through and we've allowed take-home cars and tried to up our take-home, where, you know, a lot of municipalities won't let them cross, you know, county line. You know, we allow, I know one of our police officer friends is out in the Farmington subdivision in Las Casas, and, you know, so there's some of those things that we've allowed facial hair now, so, you know, tattoos that you wouldn't have normally done. So, I think there's a lot of that, that Chief and his team have tried to be proactive to say, everything you're talking about.
Exactly. There's been a lot of changes, and you're right. A lot of times, it's more than money that keep people here. But just looking back at some of the trends over the past few years, starting with January 1, 2015, up to year-to-date, you know, 127 officers have a 281-person department is what we've lost. I will say, though, that since 2015, the trend has been going down. 2015, we've lost 26. 2016, we lost 27. 2017, we lost 22. 2018, pay plan got implemented, some other things took place. It dropped down to below 2016, dropped down to 18. We're at 17 this year. So, I think that there's been a lot of the support from the council. I think some of the pay things have got addressed, and just some of the organizational changes have helped slow that number. The big thing right now that we're facing is the keeping up with the growth. That's where we seem to struggle the most right now, when we're looking at our staffing numbers. Just looking at some FBI numbers for the particular area that we're in, I think most agencies in our area are at about a 2.4 ratio. We called around and got some numbers, and I typically exclude Memphis and Nashville from my numbers, and try to look at Jackson, Clarksville, Chattanooga, Knoxville, more similar-sized cities. So, when you start looking at numbers of personnel, just based on population, we're at about an 8-1, 1.87. The next closest city is Clarksville, they're at 2-1. Then you go to a 2-2 in Knoxville, a 2-7 in Chattanooga, and a 3-3 in Jackson. So, the big challenge for right now, for us right now, is keeping up with growth.
1.8.
1.8.
1.8 instead of, and they're at 2.234.
Yeah.
The closest one was 2.2.
2.1, and that's Clarksville. That's Clarksville. You know, when you look at our current budget of positions of 281, we have 18 vacancies right now. We're hiring 17 that'll start in November, which kind of goes back to what you were saying. You know, we're not just going to fill seats to fill seats. We left a position vacant just because we didn't have anybody that we felt was qualified to take that position at the time. We've got nine in training, so basically, right now, we're at 254 people that are operational. So, we're really operating at about a 1.6 ratio right now, based on our population numbers. So, that's the constant challenge. I know, using the 149-515 population number, and we went through census and tried to get the closest numbers possible to what we feel the population is right now, the positions that would be approved, if they're approved in this budget cycle, the 19 would put us at 300 officers, which would put us at a 2.0, which gets us in better territory. But, you know, I'm hiring 17 November, I'm going to have to bring 19 more aboard. So, it's become challenging to hire, so to speak. You look like you have a question.
No, I was actually just doing some math, too. Is it, I was doing the, to get us to 2.1, I was thinking about Clarksville, because I was trying to take 0.3 out of the, I mean, so that's, I think it matches up pretty close. I was getting, coming to about 40, which is about 40 short of, and so, you said 17 plus 19, that gets us to 36. So, that's going to be pretty close. I mean, it's from our math. Yeah, I just, that's right.
Right. And...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but on that, on those 17 that we have starting, you know, what is typical, once we actually get them to that point, is it pretty typical that we are keeping the trainees through the trainee program? Or is it just getting them to the trainee program that we're, or are we, how many of that is lost to attrition or whatever?
Well, the turnover numbers that I give you, I factor in everything because lost positions are lost positions. I know that when people, some HR or some other organizations might use different figures for figuring turnover, they might not count a particular incident as turnover. So, the numbers I give you are everything from retirements, determinations, to, you know, we've had employees, yeah, exactly.
You need to count the growth, is the point, right?
Exactly, exactly. And then, a majority... I lost my train of thought. I did want to back up and kind of talk to what Chief Fokes was talking about earlier about the contract. We've been looking at contracts as well, and I think you're right, you don't want to... We've, we've been looking at contracts as, as well, and, uh, I think, uh, you're right, you don't want to employ, Mr. Tenenka Lue, you don't want to have employee here that doesn't want to be here because it's toxic for the environment. So you've got to kind of balance your recruiting, your, you know, if an employee wants out of here, do you let them go? But I know we've had instances where, uh, we've, uh, put people in the academy and day one of the academy, they walk out. And, you know, that's a thirty-three hundred dollar cost for us to send through the academy. I know there's other cities, uh, that have a contract where they have prorated costs for, uh, training. They've been pretty successful at recruiting and retaining people and the contract hadn't really scared anybody off. And basically what they do is say, hey, here's the cost of training, it's a fixed amount, you leave year one, here's what you owe you, you leave year two, here's what you owe you, leave year three. So we're looking at that as well and, uh, uh, most, most places I've talked to have had success with that. I think, uh, ultimately, our goal is to get up around that two point two range. I, I don't like using the population model because you, you also have to use, uh, workload measures and things like that and determining, uh, staffing needs, but to me, I think we're so far behind the, uh, curve right now that, uh, using the population comparison, and then once we get a little closer where we want to be, then we can start looking at workload indicators and things like that for staffing needs. But, uh, it, it's definitely going to be a challenge, but, uh, I, I, I think staff will be able to.
Chief, does our population include MTSU?
No, I don't believe so, I don't believe the census uses that, do they?
Yeah, they do.
They do, okay, okay.
So would it, I mean, if you're comparing, uh, if, if, if the MTSU number is included in our census, because most of those people, I think, live off campus.
Right.
Would it be, I mean, is that something we need to take into account? What the university employees, just as so we look to that number to, you know, I don't know how many officers they have.
I don't know, I don't know.
Does that make sense? That, you know, if we, with that agreement that the council we approved about a year or so or two years ago, that, that inter-local agreement where they can help patrol around, it may be good for us to also take into account what that number is since their students are included in our, our census data.
Right.
I'm not saying that we should stop hiring people, but I do say if they've got twenty officers that are patrolling, you know, half a mile or a mile around the campus, then that's a.
Right.
That's a significant number that, um, is also helping with our population, which, in that area.
Right, and, you know, that, it's, and I think the, uh, this is kind of just a real general discussion, but, you know, you also have to look at your population, your crime rates, things like that as well, uh, when, uh, determine those. But I, I feel confident though, that, uh, getting us to a two oh and then determining whether we want to be a two-one or two-two or whatever, after that point, I think that that would be the, uh, the next phase. But I think that getting us, uh, to that two oh would be, based on population, would be, would be a, a good move for us.
Councilman Wright.
I think we're all on the same page, we want good firefighters and good police officers. But I think we need to look at, uh, how we're going out recruiting these, uh, police officers and fire, uh, firefighters as well. Are we working with MTSU? I mean, we've got students here graduating. I mean, we should have a pipeline of students that want to be firefighters or a police officer. Are we looking at former military people, gotten out of military? We need to be very creative on how we're going out recruiting and looking for these individuals. Are we partnering with HR department, looking for different options on how to do things? Because if we're not, we're wasting time, we can talk about this till we're blue in the face. If you, we're still doing the same recruiting that we did twenty years ago, it doesn't really matter. We have to start thinking out of the box to recruit better people to come to the city of Murfreesboro.
Yeah, honestly, I, I, I'm all for what y'all are talking about with that too. I mean, I, I'll tell you this, you know, I don't know exactly what's going on there. I know that you guys have made some changes in the way that, you know, over the last five or six years, I know changes have been made. But, yeah, I mean, if, if you guys have some ideas you want to bring to us, I mean, I, maybe even what, what Ronnie's saying, and I'm certainly game for this too, you know, if there, if there are costs associated with being able to get those, you know, to try to do some proactive recruiting or something like that, if that's what, if we think that's what will result in having the best officers, right, that we can get, um, let us know. I mean, if, if it's partnering, if there are firms out there that do this or whatever, I mean, let, let us know that, that's something that would be interesting.
Well.
I was gonna, I, I'll tell you one last thing that I wanted to say earlier, I just, to get it off my chest here, is that, you know, one of the things about, you know, we're, when we're talking about comparing to other cities and that sort of thing, old Murfreesboro isn't, isn't old Murfreesboro anymore as far as police work goes. I mean, you know, when I grew up here, I, I suspect the job of a police officer in Murfreesboro is far different when I was growing up here than when, when all you had to worry about was Rick LaLance doing donuts in the parking lot, you know? I mean, I, and I say that laughingly, obviously, I know there was serious stuff going on then, but, you know, the number of shootings, the number of, you know, not, not just murders, not just homicides, but the number of situations that could have been homicides just so easy. Um, if in fact, one of our firefighters, paramedics hadn't got there pretty quickly or whatever, could have very easily been a murder. You know, those kinds of numbers are not getting smaller and we just got to face that. And if we're already forty behind right now of where we should be, you know, we're just climbing up this hill and I guess I, my, my whole point is, is to say, I'm, I'm ready, willing and able, we got to attack it, we got to address it and deal with it. And, and the only thing, you know, this is where I started, so any of those other things, I'm, I'm on board.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment that, you know, there's probably lots of more of these conversations going on and other council meetings everywhere. And so I'd much rather us be aggressive in that area, knowing everybody's trying to do the same thing.
Get ahead of it.
Knowing everybody's going to be trying to keep the good people that they have and to continue to try to recruit additional, you know, good people. So, I mean, I, I don't know why, if we already know we're having challenges there, we wouldn't spend some resources to make sure that we're ahead of that. Because we're going to be competing with everybody else that's doing the same thing.
I think what we're hearing, if you could come back to a number for us for police, a number for fire.
I have those numbers now, if you want them, if you want to use that to, um, to.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine.
Approve the ordinance.
Does, does that include dispatch in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, the last thing I want, I want to say, and I'm not getting political about this, because talking to all the other mayors, and, and also I think we all talk to police officers and firefighters, first responders, and, you know, looking at what has happened nationally and where, and some of those things that have happened are travesties. I mean, in, in the police officers that we talk to, none of them condone some of the things that have happened. You know, we're, we're blessed that we've not had those issues in Murfreesboro by and large, because, you know, before Chief Bowen and Commissioner Jones and Chief Christman, we were talking about community policing. But I think there's one thing that's been consistent throughout that message, is that this council has always supported our public safety employees. And in a time when you've got people who are on the streets and they don't know that their councils and their leaders are supporting them, I would argue with you and, and, and tell you, Chief, I think we have just as much of an, of an example to set to those employees to let them know, we're going to give you all the resources that you need, we're going to get your back, we want to hire the best people, and to be able to send that message to those people. I mean, why would you want to go work for an organization that, you know, i- is not supporting those groups? And so what you're hearing from Ronnie and, and this side of the table, everyone, if there are things that we need to do to help not only police, but fire and dispatch recruit, if there's incentives that we need to put out, which I think you're exactly right, we're going to be competing against other municipalities, then don't hesitate to come to us with those and let us know how we can help. So y'all have got the numbers for, uh, increases for, again, this is the, this is not the open range, this is the step range, which would be the, the, and I, I like to say, these are your rank and file, uh, employees. So y'all have got those numbers for police, fire and dispatch.
But just to clarify, we're saying a three percent COLA for police and fire that are on the step? And then, and then on top of that, they'll get their steps?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that'll move their, and I'm agreeing, I'm just making sure we're all clear, that that'll move the entire pay range for those step employees by three percent, and then the employees will get their step increase. So for the remainder of the year, that, basically, we're just going to, instead of showing that we're adding to fund balance by three hundred and fifty, it'll be zero or maybe a small amount, but I think, I think we can just get it to zero.
Rick, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, do we want to make that motion when we, when we have the amendment, when we move?
We haven't voted on the ordinance yet, so you can.
We'll just make it as an amendment.
Well, I'll just amend the, yeah, I'll amend the exhibit for second reading, so y'all can just approve that, right?
Well, we need to make, we need to make, have a motion to amend, uh, ordinance twenty oh thirty-one.
Which is a budget amendment, right?
Which is, which is already a budget amendment, so we need to, um, can we have a motion to amend the amendment?
Still moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the amendment, um, with, with the numbers that Aaron had.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Wright, did you have a question?
One second, any more?
Okay, all right, so we have two seconds, so, all right, Ms. Wright, please call the roll, we have a motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
I will now vote on the city budget amendment as amended, ordinance twenty, uh, zero, excuse me, twenty oh thirty-one, and this is first reading.
No, we just did it.
We don't have to do that, all we're going to do is get, that's what you just did, we're just going to give you an amended exhibit before second reading.
I thought we were amending the, the, the motion was to amend the amendment, right?
It was incorporate, it was a motion to approve.
Okay.
I don't know.
As long, as long.
We're incorporating the, the additional information to make this amendment.
As long as y'all, as long as y'all telling us you have everything you need to be able to give those increases, I think we're all fine.
You got a second, you did. The second reading.
And we still have second reading, all right, now you have the Water Resources Fund budget, uh, the Fund Budget Amendment Resolution.
So the only changes there are just the same raises, that were given to the city employees and it'll be the same for storm water.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, and Mr. Gore, uh, I don't think you'll have a power report presentation on this, but I wouldn't put it past you. Do you want to, as Director of Utilities and Assistant City Manager, do you want to introduce your new employee?
Oh, sure, yeah, great, uh, Ray would maybe do a better job. Uh, uh, Mr. Russell Gossett, uh, our new solid waste director, Russell, if you don't mind standing up, comes, uh, from Alabama, the Birmingham, Gadsden, uh, area, uh, several years of experience, uh, working in the solid waste, uh, industry and, uh, from the private sector. So, uh, I'm a big fan of bringing private sector experience in the public sector and especially with an enterprise fund and trying to, uh, maintain efficiencies and effectiveness on a better, uh, delivery service. So we're excited, uh, to have Russell here and look forward to the, uh, advances he's going to bring to us at the Solid Waste Department.
You're an Alabama or Auburn fan? Auburn.
Get out. Just had to know, just had to know.
Roll tide. Aaron, I, I did, I was just writing this down, but I, I would like to get a budget amendment to be able to buy Russell a hat that has the initials M-M-N-S-A. Yeah, which is make Murfreesboro not stink again, if you could do that. So, that's your, that's your charge. All right, um, I know we're all working on that, I want to tell the residents, we're all getting emails on a daily basis and, I'm, I, I make light of that, but I, I want, you know, we are all working on that, we are, especially, you know, some of us live on the north side of town and, you know, I opened up my door this morning at four in the morning and I smelled it and the smell was not sewer. So, um, I know Darren is meeting, um, coming up this Friday with Republic, Ronnie has really been working, uh, hard on this with Representative Terry, I think they're meeting Friday at three-thirty out at the landfill. I talked with a consultant in Greenville, South Carolina this weekend who, uh, does, um, remediation and monitoring of landfills all over the country. So, uh, she offered, um, pro bono to come down and, and, uh, show what they're doing all over the, yeah, well, yes. So I told her I would, I told her I will pay you to come down and fix this, so, but, um, we, uh, we are, we're taking this serious and, you know, um, the, to the resident, our water and sewer department just installed diffusers. Uh, in other words, they installed deodorizers, uh, that smell like apples at our pump stations. So, um, we're doing everything that we, we possibly can. So in other words, there's large cans of Fabreeze that are on all of our pump stations right now, so.
Real large.
Yes, so, um, we're, we're working hard on it and we're not going to, uh, to back up until we get it, we get it fixed. That's a detriment to the community and that's a detriment moving forward. All right, um, storm water management, Fund Budget Resolution, thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions, move for approval.
Motion is second, uh, please call the roll. Yeah, it was a dog second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, uh, do you have any questions for the financial dashboard information that, uh, Ms. Tucker has put up for August?
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Yeah, we've got the.
Oh, I'm sorry, FY, uh, fiscal year twenty-one Community Investment Program, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Okay, so as y'all know, when COVID nineteen hit, we implemented a spending freeze right away, which included both operating and CIP spending. Um, so while the FY twenty CIP had been approved just a few weeks before the pandemic, we opted to postpone as many of those projects as possible that were in the CIP. In addition, the FY twenty-one budget was originally anticipating sixty to sixty-five million in new debt in fiscal year twenty-one. But we, um, the operating budget was reworked and no new debt was included in that budget. So as part of the delay, all funds from previous CIP issuances and debt issuances were reviewed and reprioritized. I worked with each department to determine what projects needed to keep their existing funding in place, what projects were complete and what could be postponed and reborrowed for in the future if needed. In all, we identified around twenty-one, twenty-one million in existing bond proceeds that could be reallocated to more critical and time-sensitive projects. So today's focus will be primarily on those projects, um, for the fiscal year twenty-one CIP. After determining what funds from previous borrowings could be reallocated, a plan was developed for the FY twenty-one CIP and that is using just reallocated borrowings, no new debt is being requested in this plan. The FY twenty-two CIP requests will require new funding, either through new debt or utilizing existing city funds. And these, um, these projects in the FY twenty-two CIP include FY twenty projects that y'all have already approved, plus new projects. We'll probably just look at the FY twenty-one today and then bring FY twenty-two back to you next month. So looking at the, uh, postponed projects, here's a list of the ones that we're proposing to postpone and re-budget for in the fiscal year twenty-two and beyond CIPs. So Jones Boulevard had three point three million in debt proceeds, we've used some of that for design and right-of-way, but, uh, staff believes construction can be delayed and reborrowed for in the future. Brinkley Road reconstruction is also on the list, again, some funds have been spent there. Uh, however, we've identified about two point three million that can be reallocated. Rucker Lane is going to be rebid in phases, so where we've borrowed around seven point three million, we, uh, will keep five million of that to fund the first phase of construction and then the remaining two point three million has been reallocated. The Cherry Lane Sazerac extension has been pushed out to the twenty-two and twenty-three CIPs. And then we have other road projects, including North Manny, Burnt Knob, Carolyn Farms and the Gateway Extension, uh, to Robert Rose, Gresham Lane, the Rutherford Boulevard Extension and the Wilkinson Pike widening, those have all been postponed as well. That's around one point six million. We borrowed, we had one point nine million left for the fire admin offices over at Doug Young, uh, but this funding was not enough to cover the entire project. So we anticipate that's going to cost closer to seven, seven and a half million for complete build-out. So we'll reborrow for that once it's appropriate to begin, begin construction of that project. We also deferred one point four million for the Public Works south annex to later years. And then various recreation improvements, um, totaling one point two million have been pushed out. So as we look at overall CIP, you'll, you'll see we're proposing about seven hundred and eighty-three million in capital projects over the next several years, about forty-three percent of these are funded and then the unfunded projects will need to. Okay, so, as y'all know, when COVID-19 hit, we implemented a spending freeze right away, which included both operating and CIP spending, um, so while the FY '20 CIP had been approved just a few weeks before the pandemic, we opted to postpone as many of those projects as possible that were in the CIP, in addition, the FY '21 budget was originally anticipating 60 to 65 million in new debt in fiscal year '21, um, but we, um, the operating budget was reworked, and no new debt was included in that budget, so, as part of the delay, all funds from previous CIP issuances and debt issuances were reviewed and reprioritized, I worked with each department to determine what projects needed to keep their existing funding in place, what projects were complete, and what could be postponed and reborrowed for in the future if needed, and all, we identified around 21, 21 million in existing bond proceeds that could be reallocated to more critical and time-sensitive projects, so today's focus will be primarily on those projects, um, for the fiscal year '21 CIP, after determining what funds from previous borrowings could be reallocated, a plan was developed for the FY '21 CIP, and that is using just reallocated borrowings, no new debt is being requested in this plan, the FY '22 CIP requests will require new funding, either through new debt or utilizing existing city funds, and these, um, these projects in the FY '22 CIP include FY '20 projects that y'all have already approved, plus new projects, we'll probably just look at the FY '21 today, and then bring FY '22 back to you next month, so, looking at the, uh, postponed projects, here's a list of the ones that we're proposing to postpone and re-budget for in the fiscal year '22 and beyond CIPs, so Jones Boulevard had 3.3 million in debt proceeds, we've used some of that for design and right-of-way, but, uh, staff believes construction can be delayed and reborrowed for in the future, Brinkley Road reconstruction's also on the list, again, some funds have been spent there, uh, however, we've identified about 2.3 million that can be reallocated, Rucker Lane is gonna be rebid in phases, so where we've borrowed around 7.3 million, we, uh, will keep 5 million of that to fund the first phase of construction, and then the remaining 2.3 million has been reallocated, the Cherry Lane-Sazarak extension has been pushed out to the '22 and '23 CIPs, and then we have other road projects, including North Manny, Burnt Knob, Carolyn Farms, and the Gateway Extension, uh, to Robert Rose, Gresham Lane, the Rutherford Boulevard Extension, and the Wilkinson Pike widening, those have all been postponed as well, that's around 1.6 million, we borrowed, we had 1.9 million left for the fire admin offices over at Doug Young, uh, but this funding was not enough to cover the entire project, so, we anticipate that's gonna cost closer to 7, 7.5 million for complete build-out, so we'll reborrow for that once it's appropriate to begin construction of that project, we also deferred 1.4 million for the Public Works south annex to later years, and then various recreation improvements, um, totaling 1.2 million have been pushed out, so as we look at overall CIP, you'll, you'll see we're proposing about 783 million in capital projects over the next several years, about 43% of these are funded, and then the unfunded projects will need to either be funded through new debt, or, uh, fund balance or other proceeds, as is typical for our CIP, most of our projects, 65%, are for roads and transportation needs, then recreation makes up 12%, with public safety following at 11, and schools make up an additional 6% of CIP, so we'll just look at the '21 CIP projects today, those are proposed at about 21.7 million, again, this is all existing bond proceeds, no new debt will need to be issued for these projects, and that's included for roads, solid waste, and recreation, a little bit for airport, um, and public safety as well, on the roads and transportation side, we have the River Rock-Beezy Road Bridge, which is part of an economic development opportunity that will construct a bridge over Stones River near Old Racket Club Drive, and this includes intersection improvements at Warrior Drive in New Salem, the total cost of this project is 8.5 million, with 2.5 million in the FY '21 CIP, and the remainder to be funded in the '22, Warrior Drive is a $5 million project, it's part of that same economic development opportunity, where the city will fund 3 million, and the state will fund the remaining 2, uh, this project includes a three-lane road extension from Warrior Drive to Beezy Road, we also have the Cherry Lane Phase 3 project, which is estimated at close to 54 million, and includes widening Cherry Lane to a five-lane road, with curb gutter and sidewalks, and constructing, this phase is the one constructing the interchange at 840, we have previous funding of 1.2 million to fund the design and environmental clearances, and then, we've secured an additional 7 million in federal funds on this project, with possibly more federal funding available, um, in the future, so the '21 CIP includes 2 million with additional annual funding each year through the, uh, through the FY '25 CIP, Mercury Boulevard sidewalks are included here at 700,000, which should complete the, uh, funding for the project, as we already have 600,000 in previous borrowings, and we also received a $2 million grant for this, the Segal Renovations Project is an estimated $14 million project, as part of our agreement with TSSA to make improvements out of Segal Soccer Park, this combines remaining projects on the Jordan Farm as well, including the lighting bathrooms and pavilion, and we have about 4.9 million in previous borrowings, with an additional 4 million in '21, and the remaining coming out of the '22 CIP, um, in addition, the operating budget included the 1.5 million for the office building, uh, I'm sorry, the operating budget for the general fund, uh, so, other major projects include 3.5 million for land purchase and design of a solid waste transfer station, 7 million will be needed for construction of that, but that's funded in the '23 CIP, solid waste also has 200,000 programmed in for the route tracking software that I think Darren's presented to you, and at the, I believe at the August workshop, and, so this software will improve tracking and efficiencies overall for the department, and then funding continues for the new transit facility, which is a federal and state joint program, to construct a new facility for Rover, we have previous borrowings around 1.1 million, with 1.7 in this CIP, and the remaining in the '22 CIP, so as we discussed earlier, too, the fire apparatus replacements are gonna be funded through here, out of previously borrowed funds for Airport, as part of that swap, uh, these two replacements include a quint apparatus replacement and a pumper apparatus replacement, and we have Taxiway Echo for Airport, which is a city-state economic development opportunity to provide additional apron and Taxiway to support MTSU's expansion at the airport, other miscellaneous projects included in the CIP, um, we have funds avail, or funds programmed in for ADA renovations, contingency costs, public safety software, the Rutherford Boulevard Signal Project, and a new roof for the Salt Bin out at Florence Road, that's a really quick overview of the FY '21 CIP projects, you know, ultimately, we recommend approval of this plan today, again, FY '22, we expect to be submitted to y'all next month, um, if we can bring FY '22 to you next month for approval, the plan there would be to look at possibly borrowing in early calendar year 2021, with debt service not hitting until fiscal year '22, are there any questions on any of these projects?
And, you know, to those that are out, out there, um, Ms. Tucker and Mr. Tindall did a, a great job on explaining all this to us, uh, in the, uh, in our meetings, I think all of us had the opportunity to meet with them extensively, um, throughout this budgeting and the CIP process.
Yeah, by the way, thanks for all the work that you guys put into that on the front end, that was extremely helpful, it was, uh, presented in a great way, to where we could really kind of have summaries and talk about things in a big-picture format, so, um, appreciate that a lot, it's very, very helpful, once we get into, you know, for us to get, move along with these conversations.
I just want to make a comment, too, and this is more forward-looking for, I know we were talking about, you know, this '21 CIP funding is already in place, but as we're looking forward to '22, and a first-of-the-year, first-quarter borrowing session, um, or borrowing event, um, I, I mentioned to Craig and Aaron in the conversation, I had CIP related, and I just wanted to mention it to the council, um, you know, I think we are in very unusual times, from the standpoint that, you know, costs are still really high, from a construction standpoint, I mean, things are very expensive, uh, and we are in a incredibly low interest rate environment, from the standpoint of what it costs to borrow money, obviously, staff's done a great job, from a borrowing standpoint, reworking some of that debt, converting it to low-interest-rate debt, fixed-rate debt, which is great, um, you know, I, I personally, because of all the discussion we've had surrounding, um, the need for roads, the need for infrastructure, I'd be very interested in looking at 20, you know, moving '22 CIP from a transportation standpoint forward, um, '23's transportation stuff forward, and really anything road and transportation-related forward, and really sort of challenging staff to look at that more from the max borrowing amount and the debt service, as to what do we have the capacity to manage, and while we're in this low-interest-rate environment, to maybe speed up some of those projects within our ability to manage the project, projects, and get as much cheap money as we can get, and start as much stuff as we can start it, as fast as possible, just my perspective.
Yeah, man, that might go along with my, the, the discussions we've been having, the comments I've made about the, the MED stuff, and that can all be melded into that CIP, because we're gonna have to make a decision on that eventually, as far as, are we gonna borrow, or are we gonna spend it, and, I mean, it makes, I get it, it makes sense, at 50 basis points, or 75 basis points, or 100 basis points, for that matter, there is some merit to, to, to taking advantage of that, you know, we gotta balance it, obviously, but, you know, the debt service, the lower that number goes, you know, we've always viewed this, well, I think we all view it more from a debt service perspective than the general public, you know, they, you know.
Debt amount.
It's easy to look at that kind of big, that big number, um, and everybody says, we got X amount of debt, I think we all typically look at it a little bit more, because it was associated with the operating budget, you know, what does the debt service number look like, and, and that's really more like what we look at it in our, in our households, that's, that's why people buy bigger houses, when interest rates go down, because they can afford it, you know, so, might be a little bit of the same here, look, I, I'm forgetting that number down, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm forgetting that debt number down, all that kind of stuff, but, uh, I'm, I'm definitely open to talking about that.
I mean, if it's either gonna be borrowing it in early 2021 or late 2020, that you can borrow for, you know, even just say you're a percent, as opposed to, we normally budget on our interest, 2, 2.5, or what?
Well, unbearable right now, we're budgeting 2.5, but, I mean, I think we've budgeted, no.
We were budgeting 1.5, unbearable, but we had to really start making cuts, but we're planning to pay off our last variable rate loan this year.
Okay, so, you know, the good news is, if we can, if we can borrow now on money, we know we're already gonna have to borrow in the future, I mean.
Yeah, the projections that, that we built that you've seen, used our average weight across that capital, which is like 2.8, so.
So I think, I think we're all in agreement with that, Aaron, I know you've probably got Cumberland already looking at what that, that looks like, but.
Yeah, they provided us a report late last week, that I was planning on sharing with y'all as well, so, I, I figured that would go in line with our '22 CIP discussion next month.
I, I want to make a note, you, you know, a lot of times, we're, we're quick to let y'all know when somebody screwed up, or some, something bad has happened, but, I, I really am impressed that the discussions that this council now gets to have, as opposed to the discussions that we had three or four years ago, and when you came on board, you know, we had a great, and have a great finance department, where, you know, you guys are working every day on the things that you're working on, but there's a big difference between working in your business and working on your business, and now, instead of working in our city, and working on what we're doing every day, you guys are really looking at big-picture stuff, that we're getting information to be able to make the decisions we, we're making, so, yeah, it is extremely helpful, um, on the information y'all are giving us, so, I think y'all got your marching order on that, um, all right.
So, do y'all want to go ahead and approve the '21 CIP projects?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Ronnie, seconds, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, uh, any questions on the August 2020 financial dashboard? All right, seeing none, uh, do we have, uh, we have a report on the new debt obligation?
Mayor, we're just required to present this form, CTO 253, to the, uh, in a public meeting, uh, situation, this is for our most recently issued debt, and it's also on our website.
Do we need to have a motion on that?
We do not need a vote.
All right, uh, under licensing, you've got, uh, Race Track, Race Track 2527, Race Track 2554, and Race Track 2559.
Uh, Mayor, these, all three of these are under, uh, one manager, Nick Webb, and, um, he's present, they all meet our requirements for having one in a retail facility, and it'll be up to the state to actually issue the license, and, and make sure they meet the requirement of food sales, this is just to show that, uh, we've done our part of due diligence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, uh, you have a beer permit for the Murphysboro Young Professionals for the annual cornhole tournament at Kennesburg Village.
Mayor, this also beats our requirements, and we'll, uh, issue this once you approve it, if you approve it today.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, um, any statements?
No, sir.
Any other business by staff?
I'll mention one thing, is that, uh, Channel, um, Channel 3, City TV, has earned 19, um, in a TOA awards for its 2020 programming excellence, including awards for excellence, distinction, and honor, several different categories, so kudos to Alan and all the team at City TV, they've done a great job, uh, and also, uh, Mike Browning and Larry Flowers, they've done a great job in putting together content, and, uh, it's being recognized by the organization, so, um.
So, I'm sure, not to spoil the surprise, but we have a proclamation being prepared to present to the Channel 3 team, uh, for ne, for our next Thursday, Thursday night meeting, they do yeoman's work on keeping our, um, our residents informed on what's happening in Murphysboro, so.
Let me just mention one thing that happened last night at the school board, uh, there was a recognition for Dr. Gilbert, uh, given by the, uh, Board of Education, by our state delegation, and also from the Tennessee State Superintendent's, uh, Association, uh, great recognition for her life, given to her family, for her, uh, her, uh, lifetime effort, uh, on the, behalf of children in our community, and it was a very special program, just wanted to let that be recognized.
Awesome, any other business from council members? I got one thing I wanted to run by y'all, for, for y'all to be thinking about, um, I've talked to staff about this, and I'm not, uh, I think Adam and I traded phone calls on a Saturday, but I, Friday night I wasn't sleeping, and I've sort of thought about this, but, you know, after our conversation on the MED proceeds, I think it was pretty, um, it, it was, it was clear that the council wanted to protect that, um, initial amount, I think, if y'all are shaking, I think that's what everybody agreed, that, hey, we don't want 15 or 20 years from now, we want, at a minimum, when councils are sitting here, and it's not any of us, we want them to look back and say, the council in 2020 left us $250 million, that's gonna continue helping the city, so, uh, I talked to Craig, and then reached out to Representative Terry and Senator Reeves, we can actually, a resolution can always be changed, but we actually can have a private act and amend our charter, they said they would be willing, once they see the language, to take that to the state, and we could write into our charter, in the year 2020, the city council sold Murphysboro Electric Department, here's what, why that they sold that, here's what that money is supposed to be used for, here, that money can't ever go below what the principle is, and if the council wanted to ever change that, it would have to go to a referendum, for the citizens of Murphysboro to be able to agree to spend that money, so, ultimately, it wouldn't be the council members who weren't here 15 years ago, or 20 years ago, it would be the residents, who would be the ones who would have to make the agreement to change the charter, to get into the basis of that initial investment, and so, um, if that's something that the council wants to do, we need, uh, to be able to get that into this session, and to run that, um, we need to start letting, we don't have to determine how we're gonna spend the money right now, but if we all agree that we don't want that initial principle, that the city can only spend the proceeds that are coming off of that amount, the initial principle can't ever be touched, then that's something that we need to send to our, our delegation, and let them run that, and, you know, the other thing, too, if the council mem, if the, if, if a council came through 15 or 20 years ago, and with the delegation that would be in office, and they looked at what the council wanted to do 15 or 20 years ago, the legislature then again would have to vote to allow the municipality to change that charter, to go against what they said they wanted to do 20 years ago, so, that's, as far as I have found, that would be the absolute best way that we could protect that investment, without putting it into an ordinance that could easily be changed, so.
Sounds like a good idea to me, I, one clarification I'll make on that, is that gonna be, you know, we, we've had, we have had some varying level of discussions about, are we gonna spend some of it, we also have the funding, just sort of the, the, the logistics of how that is gonna get funded, since it's amortized and all that, is that something we think we can do, where we, hey, it's an all-or-none deal, or it's a whatever we choose to put into that bucket deal?
I think it's whatever we would choose to put in the bucket, we could say, this is how we're going to do it, but at the end of 15 years, that initial investment, which is 240-some-odd billion dollars, would have to be in there, and then, after that, the council, if they wanted to give money to whatever organization they wanted to give it to, they could only do that out of the proceeds, they could never touch that basis.
Yeah, you know what I'm just sitting here thinking, and this, I may be getting ahead of myself here, and, and I might outsmart myself and say something stupid, but, if we, if we do something that's based on a corpus, you know, basically, which the corpus amount would be more of the 250 number, then we basically take the, what if we took then the interest number on the AM, and used it to basically pre-refund, uh, a, a move-up of, uh, an acceleration of borrowing for the roads, so we basically take the interest portion of the amortization to pre-refund and pay for a, whatever CIP number, what we were calling CIP, we basically borrow it, use that to pre-refund it essentially, pay for it, whatever, whatever you want to technically call it, leave the 250, which is the corpus, into whatever you're talking about, then we've got our spending on the front end done, and paid for, still got 250 going to the deal, that's gonna kick us off the, hopefully, 4% a year, which we can use in operating budget.
Y'all just, y'all think about that, um, so, that way, maybe for next Thursday, our next Thursday meeting, let's maybe put that on the agenda for other business, to give staff the ability to go ahead and start working on the, the legal language that we would need to do, to do a charter amendment, and, and have, uh, the House and the Senate run that for us, and that way, um, you, you know, that, that would be about the only way that we've gone through to figure how you could truly say, can't, but you can't touch it, and you can use the money, but you can't. use the money, but you can't, you can't touch it. So, all right, any other? All right, we'll stand adjourned.